America and to the Republic for which of say us one nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Just please give your name and address.
My name is Ruth Pastah. I live in.
Is that true now?
My name is Ruth Costa. I reside at seventy-six Malaven Drive, West Haven. I'm here tonight representing the First Congressional Church of West Haven Apple Festival Committee. I just wanted to make the committee aware of how great your student body here is at West Haven High School. We had students from the culinary environment. They washed all the potatoes, almost five hundred of them. We had kids from your ACES program. If you were there, you saw the red signs that were put to ground. They did that. We had kids that were there during the week, recent graduate and some other children from the area. Helping us adults put everything up. Then Friday night, we had children from the band. We had some from the West Haven freshman football team. We had kids from soccer team. They all came and helped with the bounce houses, the food area, the painting and craft area. And they were there all weekend long, being polite, grateful, and just playing fun to our women. We are in better places than a lot of people think we are. I want to thank you for letting us your students. And we'll be looking forward to working with them again next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I I got a little choked up at the end when you said that we're in a better place. Wholeheartedly agree with you. Thank you so much for coming and letting letting us know that. Uh, we'll definitely make sure that it gets back to uh, Mr. Bowen, uh, and Ms. Sutton. And if we could get uh, Rob to put something on our social media.
Yeah, you know what? I think you said you were gonna send a letter. When we receive the letter, then we'll we'll get the information.
Excellent.
I'll get out those two bars of cakes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
I just wanna thank you for inviting the clubs and organizations to have tables there and perform. It's really a special time that people can see really how great our West Haven things are. So thank you just as much for extending the invitation to the kids. I'm sure that they got just as much out of it.
It's part of our outreach to the community and love being involved. So if you guys ever need anything, you know what involved.
Yes, excellent. That started our meeting off great. So loud, I can't even. No one has ever told me they can't hear.
No, no, I never. I do. I wasn't sure of everything.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say, I don't think. But I feel a little complimented now that I'm not as loud as I think I am.
Um, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board? Or a second time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Or a third and final time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none, public portion is closed at six oh four. We will move to student representative. Pull a little closer to your face.
So, uh, yeah, it's just been tonight, but thank you much for that. Uh, I have friends who spend literally all weekend at the Apple Fest. I never see them this whole weekend. Oh, I text them. Okay. I know it's really good for all my friends who are in clubs, like to join. So that was. Um, it's just been tonight as our host words are beginning their senior nights. Uh, Jen is at her volleyball one currently right now, so she's being celebrated. Boys soccer will on Saturday and girls swim and soccer will be having them in the next three weeks, along with football cheer. And not band, I learned, but the dance team will be having it on Halloween night. So that's very exciting. My student's not very exciting. She's a little. The college where happened on October first, where colleges, universities, military and other career paths allow students to ask questions and so are representatives. It was a great opportunity for everybody, myself included. I got to leave practice early to explore. So it was very, very nice. This last Friday, football one, they're matching into Xavier, and we are now three and one. This upcoming week is the homecoming game. We have to prep there at six P M. And the homecoming dance will be October twenty-nine here at the deep in the cafeteria. And then the fault play old May main is about a month away. So I know we're circling very well. I'm part of the crew. We had a very good meeting today. So that's that's all that's going on. Very exciting stuff right now.
Thanks, Kate. Does anybody have any questions for Kate? Sorry. All right. We will move. Thank you, Becky. We'll move to um, administration status schools.
Yeah, um, yeah, one thing I know she mentioned the the band. Just so I I think one thing worth noting, uh, according to tonight, we we may have the biggest band in the state. Um, she went now with almost two hundred kids and in fact, we had to purchase extra uniforms. Anne was away. She had a nice sign off on it. It's a good problem. We'll figure it out. So, um, yeah, we we it's the largest, one of the largest bands in the state of Connecticut. Certainly, we're all about it. And it really makes the Friday nights, um, enhances the football whole experience. Kids are having a great time. Think we're gonna be on Friday and Thursday on channel three. Somebody told me this week, but I'll I'll get the information to you guys. When I hear about it, it's because of the band. Um, second, uh, Judy is not here tonight, um, but uh, this is something I still wanted to announce and let you guys know. Uh, she's attending uh, Impact in Action Summit, which is at Foxwoods. And the reason she's doing so is because Robin Farrar, our math coordinator, and Mona Solana, who's the math coach over at Carrigan. Are presenting a workshop, which I think is a really big deal, uh, building success in middle school using diagramming data. So that to me is a tribute to our district and the work, as you guys know, that we've been doing, um, over the last two or three years, diagramming especially. Um, I'll answer any of your questions, but um, I I just wanted to bring out the administrative report on the Savin Rock roof project. Um, you guys need to be aware that right tonight, you're going to be asked to pass the educational specifications. Not adding a second floor. We're not doing anything. The reason you have to do that is because this is like any other addition. We'll begin our brand new building project where in order to get reimbursement, um, the word has to pass educational specifications. Ken is here to talk about the timeline and what he anticipates the project to look like. Um, but I don't think we need to get into the weeds. You guys get into the weeds as to, you know, what it's going to do. But it is part of the process of working to get the reimbursement. So I'll call up Ken right now.
Okay, so as Neil has pointed out, uh, any state reimbursed project requires a motion, a resolution of the Board of Ed in the city council. That this is a front, so a three point one million dollar project, which will be reimbursed, uh, roughly seventy-eight over the Saturday. Uh, so we're asking for the educational specs to be approved tonight. Now, we're going out of the border. Council meetings on the fourteenth trying to get out of agenda. I may come back to you. If this doesn't fly, you're supposed to go after the council. You wrote the motion to say anticipation of the council approving, so we think we're okay according to our dignity. Uh, but if I have to come back, I come back to you. Any questions on the seven rough?
Can you just can do the timeframe on it, Ken?
Sure. So, uh, we have to submit to the state as a non-priority job first ten days of any month. So at this point, we, you know, that, uh, we expect approval fairly quickly. Then we have to go out to bid. That would put us probably able to start to, then we'd work through the summer to get a done.
And and so you're aware, like, we know, like, we talked about, if you're building a school, it's you submit and then you wait a year. This is what they call, as Ken mentioned, a non-priority project. So you get, we'll get an answer pretty quick.
Now, part of that roof project, Scott, place this in the gym. We also have in the media center, notice there's like twelve glass panels, ten are fobbed. We replaced two years ago. We're gonna try and get to this project. So bring natural light back into the media center that from that way.
Just a too long.
Right, no, it's a problem for that. Um, and then we're gonna eliminate the doors that go out to that sunroof, uh, and put windows there. That's what we want to be twelve months. Can't can't plan the roof anymore.
Believe it or not, again, don't laugh, though, uh, if some of you are familiar. Outside, especially at Learning Lab, there was an area which I can't believe they would let us put kids out there today where kids were allowed to find.
Any other questions on the front? Ken Holmes, McCurn. Is that original or was it based already once before? No, that building is our newest building besides Washington Temple High School built nineteen seventy-six. I have to believe he's done at least once. Uh, since then, but it's desperately needed now.
And I know you're talking about April start time. The reason I ask, you better are trying to do this once school year ends.
Problem with that, Bob, is I think that you run into a lot of companies with a lot of work, so if we can get it done a little bit earlier.
Yeah, there's no danger, kids. We have pre construction meetings. We have, um. The weekly meetings on site.
With my IT background and can take care of this problem. See that? And I do an excellent IT job there.
So a roof that size can never be one of the sun. Uh, it's very common that stuff on students in school, we work demonstration, in fact. A building committee has to be appointed and principal of the school, the on the building committee, to join our building committee to help us through the process.
It's done during the day.
During the day, yeah.
It doesn't.
They're doing sessions, they visit all, it's not like the shingle hook, it's a black hook. So, uh, I mean, it it usually isn't, but if it harsh in the lives, the principal says, can you sit there sometimes?
Will that impact the summer program for our special needs?
Uh, it it could potentially impact summer program based on where the cranes and equipment's gonna be. But we can always directly be on the other side of the school, uh, and hopefully overcome that. Uh, we may have to put something around the terminal school to keep the kids away from it. Get, you know, the the warranty well, but that could all be worked out with your principal.
I also think that that's, um, it's a good question. There's a, you know, um, and I hadn't thought about it until you just asked. But we now have Washington available, so that could be an alternative site. I think as you can get closer, we get every time.
He was just mentioning that to me.
We we can, I'm sure we can work around that. To get the job done, we would do whatever it takes.
Good questions. So we are looking for a motion to be approved on this.
Do I need to read this in its entire? All right, and let me get my glasses on.
Well, you, it's under new business.
All right, so I'll wait till then. Never mind.
Yeah, you know what? I also ask Ken, um, in fact, Bob asked a question tonight regarding the coffee center in in Malloy School. What's gonna happen to that? We actually have a pretty good plan in place, which the, um, people at Cerox are very happy about. The workers, they don't want, nobody likes them.
Like so, um, it's a vendor list of, uh, who are gonna introduce. It was John Dunn. Uh, John basically says, uh, a building of wall in a room that has heatless, it's a party, used to be the old metal shop.
And Carrigan.
That wall will separate if it's now being restored. And what's going to be, um, storage reading, what's gonna be the actual. Um, in addition to that, then air conditioning, the power setup. And air conditioning, that, in the bottom left, here. And we're going to use a park skate on the outside, so, um, put some some doors so the buildings, they make bar close to the building. The change in curve for the buses to make sure they're in there. And it's a pretty straightforward project. No, don't just make the the shoes right, the building department there, fire margin, they're in favor of it. Um, and they told what their concerns are and what those concerns are.
And, uh, what's that? About a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred?
About a hundred twenty-five thousand.
That's what I was gonna add.
It's not coming, it's not coming out of the local budget. There is cap, there are capital funds available that we can offer.
City, city capital, uh, city.
Nobody in the world right now.
They could do the schedule right and have some kind of a table in France.
I know that was a question that I had, so I'd ask Ken to talk about it tonight.
All right. Any other questions for Ken? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Um, we actually met with, uh, with Rick Schrader, Ken, myself, Mike McGrath, Chris Everum to go over, um, our capital budget and what was actually approved, was what we asked for last year, got approved. And this year, now keep in mind that, um, and they will be here in the next meeting if we're available, but this meeting, uh, brings to talk about the implementation of the, uh, technology re- uh, refresh. So they'll be here next week to answer any of your questions regarding that. But that money, um, money has been set aside and it has been set aside, um, from what I saw the other day when we met going forward for the next five years. So that's a, that's a really big thing for the district.
That's great. Thank you so much.
And, um, again, as the theme, you know, we wanted to know where the coffee center was going, assuming the, um, well, he's he's turned over to the city tonight. Just again, your decision. But I heard the other question that had come up a lot was regarding, well, what about, um, mandatory pre-school and what would we do with the kids and should we keep the building? So, um, Melody manager, um, it's definitely here tonight. Uh, Melody has really done a lot of work because they changed a lot of laws regarding, um, early childhood and preschool, what the expectations are. So I asked her to come and 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 give this presentation, so you'll have a better feel from where we're going. And 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 again, I won't steal your thunder, but as of now, there's nothing that says this has to be mandatory and you have to have a site. That's just not feasible for, certainly not just West Haven, but for, eh, most of the districts of the state of Connecticut. But Melody, Melody, um, has got some good ideas regarding that too, in case we had to, uh, in case we had to add, and her plan is to add classrooms, so we think we're ready to go.
Hi, everyone. There have been a lot of legislative changes for early childhood, which we'll get into, but I think important is to look at our current numbers. So these are our referrals to the L E A. So any of our special ed referrals for this eighth bracket. Um, we have steadily increased as time has gone on, year after year, we're going up and up. The need is getting greater, uh, which is why we're able to open up another classroom this year over at Washington then. So legislative changes, this is really early start Connecticut. It's really three bills put into one. But basically what this all means is there is an endowment of three hundred million dollars this year. And we set an increase over the next two years. Um, the purpose of this is to provide a mixed delivery from pre-K. The state is not looking to close down any community sites. It's not supposed to be public school, universal pre-K, but community pre-K. So the parents have those options. Um, it's supposed to improve the affordability for parents and still that sliding scale fee, if any of you were familiar with school readiness, when we were, I was laying down for that. Same kind of sliding scale fees was affordable for parents. Um, one of the the data points they gave was that typical parent will spend between sixteen percent to twenty-seven percent of their annual income on pre-K or childcare during stage. So the state is looking to decrease that for parents. That's one of the major things that we see. Um, and interestingly, we were at a conference today, which made a direct correlation between quality pre-K and a child's ability to read on grade level by grade three. So that's what we're looking. So we can, we are eligible for this funding, um, to expand. We can use it for programming costs, administrative costs. They're already doing it out of the community, and I think it is, it's high time for us to kind of get into this so that we can also expand. So these are the things that we are currently looking at doing or when we're in the process of doing. We have applied, I should hear this week for this A Q I S. This is the accreditation quality improvements support. We are not currently niode accredited. We are seeking to become niode accredited so that we are competitive. Uh, this only helps to bolster our own program, that quality of service, that quality of teaching. Uh, thirty submitted for all six of our elementary schools. Um, and we're again hoping to hear back this week. This is free support for basis, absolutely free. Um, they'll come to all of our classrooms. They'll meet with all of our teachers, making sure that we are taking the proper steps towards accreditation. The other thing we're working on this year is curriculum development. We haven't worked on our curriculum in quite some time. So T L's, our standards have changed a little bit. So we have a curriculum team that's meeting for a year, again, with the help of bases, to help guide us towards our end goal of better service for students. They opened up, so there was an application for July of twenty-five. They are opening it up again. It hasn't opened yet. For October of twenty-five, which we're in. When they do that, you have the ability to apply, you've done these other things prior. So we will be applying to see if we can get some of those slots. It is competitive. Thirty-five percent of those slot types are for an infant toddler. But the option is there for us to grab. There's a larger expansion, even if, let's say we don't get it, or it has our fingers and toes, we do. There's a larger expansion in the fall twenty-six and even even larger expansion in twenty-seven. So these are some of our goals. We are looking to become niode accredited. We're expanding our public pre-K for parents. Um, I would like to see us in a full day program, school day for both our threes and our fours. Might have kind of a timeline span for that. Um, cause right now, if you're not aware, we have a half-day program for both pre-K three and pre-K four. We are going to increase our quality instruction, increase services for students, and that's service delivery type. Uh, we've actually worked with a couple of our kindergarten teachers this year, so that our four-year-olds, there's a couple of them that were trialing this and keeping data. They're actually pushing into our kindergarten so that they are getting kind of a taste of that, they're ready with support. Um, increase ability for our West Haven families. I mean, first and foremost, that is the whole person. That's grand. Increase funding. Um, there are a couple, I gave this, uh, this graph here from the state, and the numbers keep changing. So as the years go on, there's more and more funding for these slot types. But if we were looking at those ten-month slot types to be ours for rent. We could be eligible to start, uh, at that quarter time. Two point eight to five years for three thousand, and then also, once we get to the school day time of that halftime. Full time for ten months. So you can see the funding bracket, eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for one student in. That allows us to expand, allows us to hire, allows us to provide with that student my theme, and that's just one slot. So. So we can't supplant, so we can't say, oh, we're using our local, you know, funds or city funds, and now we're just gonna use this. So that is really the only requirement, other than that we have to be in the process of niode accreditation and follow those guidelines. So it's parents will have to apply. We're very familiar with this, with school readiness. A lot of schools were using school readiness funding, and they're public schools. Uh, but those are the two biggest things. Everything else, we're kind of a pair of. Yeah.
What happens when a child requires more services at that age, seven fifty per child may not necessarily cover that. Does the city have to offset those costs?
I mean, the short answer is yes, but the city already is.
They're more required to service those.
Yes. So if a child has an I P, whatever services they require are required from us as a district.
Is that first to three as well?
Not up to three, yet.
Okay, well, but.
Yeah, when they turn three, at three years old, they become responsible for those services.
And these programs, you said we're starting at two and a half?
So with the early start grant, you can start a child at two point eight years of age. In terms of service delivery, we're responsible once they turn three, cause they can purchase three services most of the time until they turn three. And that is the majority of referred to, or they don't. So I I have kind of a side-by-side comparison here, kind of like year by year, what what we're doing. So right now, twenty-five, twenty-six, and this might change depending on that application that we'll be applying for, to see if we can get some of those slot types in. Um, we have our two classrooms in most of our buildings. We have our pre-K three in the morning, pre-K four in the afternoon. And twenty-six, twenty-seven, what our goal is, is that we will have a full day of pre-K for our four-year-olds. Um, and you can see on the, on the right side of things, they give kind of a breakdown. The pre-K three, we would still be eligible for some of that funding. Again, we're expanding our classrooms. And then our pre-K four is a full day, again, an expansion. It's eighty-seven fifty per child in annual thing. On a signing scale fee for parents, if they make a hundred thousand dollars or less, it is a free slot for them. And then in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when this really gets large, we are looking at having at least three classrooms for building. Full day for both pre-K three and pre-K four. That would be my.
Do you anticipate this, uh, based on on the numbers, uh, diminishing in our elementary schools, or do you foresee us having to add on?
I I don't foresee us having to add on. You brought a great point, my kindergarten enrollment. So, like you.
Sorry.
You saw it ahead of time. So our kindergarten enrollment, um, I have kind of tracked throughout the years, uh, between kindergarten registration and October one. It helps us to determine, and sometimes I'm a little bit wrong, but it helps us determine how many classes we need. Um, also keep in mind, we still, we still do have that kindergarten waiver. So any child born after September first through December thirty-first, their parent can request for that kindergarten entry waiver, that assessment that we. Um, to determine whether or not they're quote developmentally appropriate kindergarten. Over the past, this year and last year, we had roughly one hundred students who were tested. Uh, we are still at about an eighty-five to eighty-seven percent entry rate for those students who are testing. Our benchmark, again, is looking at their age ability and not that they might be gifted and could test at a five-year-old level. We just didn't think that was fair. What I am looking at are some of these legislative trends. Um, for the first time, the kindergarten entrance inventory that we do every year, they're asking to see if a student was enrolled in pre-K prior to coming to us. They're trying to track that data. They expanded some of the certification, so that elementary certification now goes pre-K to six rather than K to six. And also the special education certification that one-six-five was kindergarten through grade twelve, now it is pre-K through grade twelve. On top of that, if you were to call the state like some of us did and said, hey, what's this gonna look like for next year, they could, they will tell you, we're not quite sure. I think what's going to happen is that that waiver assessment will disappear. The state will say this is a hard and fast date because parents now have this other ability to send their child to a quality pre-game program. That doesn't cost them, maybe doesn't cost them anything, but period. So I I think we're starting to see a shift from kindergarten enrollment and that'll go into pre-K. So to your point, when I looked at how many classrooms will I need to create, we have, I would need six. This one provides six. So it was kind of an even spot. And even then, there are some, you know, there's an empty classroom here, we're there, that we can also expand upon.
Close what it's having on.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's eight kids dispersed over that grid classroom.
So I I think we're seeing this trend where there's, there was a bill that was trying to pass in like April, um, where they were going to make the hard and fast cutoff for September one. Um, it did not pass, but that's because all these other bills for early childhood didn't come to the floor yet. So then when those came to the floor in July and all passed, I think that bill might have looked a little bit different. Any questions for me? I know I'm throwing a lot of data in fact that you.
We'd like that.
Me too.
Really like this plan because I'm a huge proponent of kids going to their neighborhood schools, not as much as, you know, we yeah, we're a little less than neighborhood schools now with our schools being a little bit bigger, but, you know, if the kids are gonna go to Washington School, I like them going to K at Washington School.
At Washington School, I like them to automatically flow right into like. Teen and and the building and the staff and I I do like that plan versus, you know, having kindergarten in this building is first grade in this building. For some, some.
We we talked a lot about transitions at this age and for our kindergartners. It's so hard and it's it's also hard for a parent.
Even from grade to grade, I remember my kids were like, oh no, I wanna stay with Mrs. Donigan forever.
So it's really hard for parents, it's really hard for kids, bringing them to a different building for two years. To have them go to a different building for the next four to a different building, having them start in their elementary school where. All their friends go, where they'll go to kindergarten, they can walk down the hall and say hello to their future kindergarten teacher. Meet the principal. These are all the things that we do for kindergarten registration anyway. You know, you wanna get used to that building, so we should. Do that for pre K too.
I'll put on my past P C A president hat, they get to be today a couple of years earlier. So I I I really support that plan of neighborhood school. Pre K versus the separate site. I I do like that idea.
I think if the school's kind of accommodated, it makes a ton of sense, I think. Even logistically, for parents that have kids that are in, you know, two years apart, that they're able to bring their. They're not just all about preschool in one place and. Or first grade. Well, since are, will all of the pre K classes be full-time or will there still be an option for part-time if a parent or children left? Totally to a half day.
I think what might end up happening because a couple of our. Schools are gonna be what we call a satellite site, like Pigg's only has one pre K classroom. That might ideally become one of those half-day classrooms. Eventually I'm in like the full day, but I understand some parents, they don't maybe need that or they don't really want that necessarily just yet. And sometimes that is a, it's a hard sell for a parent. Like I said, it's hard for parents too. You're saying goodbye to your baby for the first time and trusting someone else for a day. So I would like to keep some of those part-time. I think they're gonna be necessary, especially in terms of like service delivery and having two things, but. Yeah, and even if we aren't the answer, there's other community sites that will those birthdays too.
And logistically. The preschool kids, infants will be near K and like they're that.
Oh yeah, so that's how they are set up currently.
So just. I'm just thinking like the pre K is the fifth grade.
Oh yes, yeah, they're always near the kindergarten hall thing, all this.
And the most important question is, you have to be a West Haven resident.
So interesting, with this, with early start funding, you do not have to be a West Haven resident. Um, which brings in a different variety of issues in terms of services because we're only responsible for West Haven students. However, one of the things I was thinking of is if we have a teacher. In the building who just had a child or has a three-year-old, they can then apply for that slot, be bringing their child into our pre K classroom.
And it's the same sliding scale. What happens if? We. We have West Haven residents on a waiting list and non-residents in in the program. I mean, uh, I. I I would have some difficulty with that personally. I would want us to take care of our residents.
Yeah, I think when we start, first and foremost, our kids who are currently with us take precedence. So that'll be meeting with the parents and having that conversation of, hey, we wanna continue to provide these services. If we do X, Y, and Z, we can also kind of expand their program. Um, I will say there are. In our community, they're more capable of doing a different district. Because they're community sites, so it doesn't. It becomes a problem for us in terms of service delivery, because we have identified services for a state residence. That's what order pays more. Um, I don't foresee like a waitlist being an issue just because there's so many programs, but definitely something to keep. In our minds, we can't, we can't negate that part of the grant that is open to everyone, but I think we would be heavily focused on our West Haven residents. That's who we're trying to have. And considering the need in this town, I think that's our focus.
So if you have, if you're from another district and have a kid that needs extended services, you're less likely to choose our program because that is not gonna solve for that.
Correct. And as we're expanding, other districts are expanding. Like I said, early start, it was school readiness, but now it's early start. Other municipal districts are utilizing us in their programs, including New Haven, Camden, Meriden is another one. So. Brand is huge with this. So one of our public school districts where we kind of have this model, thirty-seven. And that we're copying.
I mean, Rose's point's a good one. I actually wasn't thinking that. So and we can't like prioritize. West Haven, it's not just gonna be open to everyone.
Yeah, we can't change the nature of the grant. We are confined to how we're utilizing it and we couldn't skip. Anybody, you know, they're on the waitlist, but hopefully the hope is that our program is so fast. That even if, okay, you wanted, you're not a district child, you want to really go to Savin Rock. Well, I don't have a spot there, but I do have one in Washington. That's well. That's a good point.
We're just, uh, I mean, let's just look at, you know, adult U N H students, for example, right? How many of them have children that need daycare or whatever you wanna call it, growing kindergarten? Or growing. Early start, okay, being. They, they don't have to live in West Haven. They can live in New Haven or Handen or Orange or Milford. And come to U N H and because this is where they want for the majority of their day, they're gonna want their child to be. In. In West Haven where they are. And that's a concern.
It's, I guess, if I can add, uh, Melanie obviously knows the, our current and. Most recent involvement with school readiness, but having been the school readiness liaison and years prior. Um, with school readiness, it was the same rule and I personally never had any applications for anyone outside of the district. In fact, not to say that it couldn't happen, but just know that throughout the years, I haven't had an outside application. I'm not sure. No, we never not.
And it sounds like our surrounding towns are doing this, so that might lessen.
And the alternative is to not take the grant at all, that we don't have it at all, right? It's not like we can change, it's not like we can change the. The terms of the grants, either saying no thanks and not do it.
Private sites aren't going the way, they're still, they're still gonna be there, it's available and in. A lot of cases, they'll have a lot more spots, um, just by the nature of them being private.
Uh, the private sites will continue to have those full day spots, which which personally, that's something that I would want. So I needed that. I needed more than six hours of care, so that's why I went to a private facility. So, um, most likely if. You're, you don't live here, you don't have that interest in your child attending their their homeschool, so you're most likely looking for that extended day of care up to ten hours.
I'm just gonna give you an example, a, um. Global. School, right? If you, you can work in the city and be eligible. She has a waiting list like two years long. So I I understand that it's only, you know, right now. And this will probably help that greatly, but I'm just thinking. If that's what is happening now. What's it gonna do to us? And you know, as far as. Our public school getting into this type.
And certainly you're right, that could happen with um, the West Haven Child Development. Her waitlist mostly is for infant toddler, which we wouldn't offer. It would be for that preschool, but there is a great need for infant toddler, certainly. So she does have. I I I hear stories, but as soon as mothers are getting pregnant, they're putting their names on um, her waitlist.
And and Stefania, you're right, except if you're in the infant toddler, you were automatically going into three to four, right?
Yeah.
So, so there's, it's not just infant toddler that has a waitlist. Three to four is done, it has been done since she's created.
I I just wanted to ask a clarify question that I think might. Help me understand Rosa's point for sure. We're not offering a twelve-month. So any of our in like city employees that are legalizing. West Haven Child Development are likely using a twelve-month slot, which we would not offer.
Yeah, those full day slots are twelve-month. They do have what they call a school day slot. And that is a ten-month slot, but most of them, like their teachers that we work with every day, they're using a full day.
And my other question, um, and I just wanna make sure, cause I think you asked as well. If a student is not in district and requires services, we are not required to service them. So the likelihood of our, uh, I don't wanna say this, I don't know. The likelihood of our resources being legalized on a non-resident for the higher leveling resources is almost zero.
It is absolutely zero. They have to register just like. Yes.
I definitely hear Rosa's point. I think that people probably see a bunch of students that are, or families that are trying to. Enroll their student in an opportunity such as this, but I feel a little better knowing that if we are at a point where we are accepting out of district students. Uh, the actual resources of that very specific staff member that is servicing. Our higher need students is not a, they're not pulling those staff members to work with an out of districts.
Oh, you can look at it this way. If there's a student with special needs, purpose of the age, there's gonna be, gonna go through the I E P process.
Right.
The town that's responsible for that child has got to say. I don't have the program or no, you're not gonna send them to West Haven because we have.
Right.
They're not gonna wanna. Pay for the services.
Yeah, I I was, I was asking more to sort of illustrate the. Population that we anticipate taking advantage of this. So I think that you're right, we're. While we can't. Use a student that's out of district. I think that by default priority given to our students because they are coming to us.
Yes, but can I just clarify, you said. Out of district, people becoming now, they're not. Right?
I would, so far, to my knowledge, we haven't had enough in the community. Now in our public.
Oh.
Yeah.
And I will say our priority will always be, that's why I started with our L A referrals. We processed one hundred and forty-seven referrals last year. Many of them from four to three, many of them from our community sites as well. We still wanna maintain those partnerships with them so that there is a mixed delivery of service. Every single time we get one of those, we ensure that they are West Haven residents and that is the first conversation we have, you know, that they are not West Haven residents. Our funding for those services are for West Haven residents and they have to their their hometown, if that's what they call.
Just have to say one thing, I think it's a great program. One thing that I will take issue with is I've seen the toughest kids in a school that are older. Be the kindest kids to them. It's, so when you say you don't want them near the fifth grader, it's like. Like if they help with the lines, some of those kids that are so tough, they are most kind, gentle kids when there's a little baby in there. So. I I I think.
I agree that.
And we always have those partnerships with those older grades coming in and working on the little kids. It it's amazing, I guess, in the toughest world. So I I think that's something that we need to.
And so we often have our our four feeders come and share kindergarten classrooms, and they'll read for them, even with our pre K kids. And to your point, we've had some of our toughest friends, you know, come and join us and be a model for our pre K students. And they are every time. You set the challenge and they'll rise to that, you know, so it's not as though we wanna keep them isolated anyway. I think when they start. It's better when they're kind of in the same hallway, they're following the same line structure.
Just, you know, I just didn't want it to, I just think it's important because I think it's really good, you know, for kids to make little kids.
Absolutely. And I also always said, little feet, go slow.
It's just my multi-generational programming is amazing to help the little weight and. You know, for kids to do. I mean, I I I totally agree with. Uh, but I just, I like the idea of, I just think of Seth Haley, like starting the whole, or in the kindergarten. Kind of working their way around this. So that's, but they always did the buddy system. This is, he knows classy, then talking to him, so I, yeah, I know our schools do a lot of that. That's beneficial.
I think this is a great grant. I'm really impressed that you guys find something that will. I think a lot of the things that we heard, well, even when the eightth inning cut off was. What are we going to do with our four-year-old? So now we have the solution and put our fingers crossed that it. Comes to fruition and we're implementing it soon.
And I like, I like what you said about uh, the four-year-olds being evaluated now to. I think that will definitely facilitate that process for those parents that wanna shift their kids to a more kindergarten-focused. Learning environment and even even part-time, you know, come in for. Not specials, but you know, for certain lessons or, you know, I think that's definitely helpful, um, having the kids right in the building, so.
I think it's great, you just said, pointing out that we're bringing, we're actually showing them, this is what it's gonna be like. In a, you know. In a gentle way where they have the support with them.
Yep.
But I mean, and these are all things like. Not everyone knows what to do, but that's a huge thing. West Haven is doing. That's why Josh talked about.
Yeah, I have to think the teachers, these are always, their ideas coming. About certain students, hey, I wanna trial that, I'm like, let's do this, I get a kindergarten teacher on board. So I really have to hand it to my group teachers, they were hard, so were kindergarten teachers.
Well, it takes an open door for those conversations to happen, so we thank you guys as well.
Well, as as Melly mentioned, this is kind of an ever-changing, ongoing thing. We'll, we'll bring her back as needed or as changes occur, so we'll keep you guys. Form this school's happening, what the plans are, just as we get closer to next school year.
Good job, Mel.
Thank you guys.
Right, superintendent, anything else from you?
Awesome. I'm excited. Um, I don't have anything, but I am excited that uh, Cora and Rob got invited to that seminar. So I think that's exciting that we're there to showcase our program. It's nice that we're.
I knew the two of you would know all of that. I think they're the beginners, I already.
That's right, that's right. Excited that they got to go, so I'm, I'm glad they're recognized for the heart.
I just wanted to let everybody know I did get a thank you note uh, from J B for the, um, yeah, well, soon. Readings that we sent to her, um, she sent it to.
She did tell me that about the kids too, but I shouldn't.
No, that's awesome.
Alright.
On that note.
Um, I also got a thank you note from Kristen and the Toshon family, uh, which I forgot. So I'm sorry, but I will bring it uh, to next meeting. She thanked us for our, uh, books. And I attended the college fair as a parent, uh, my, my video we had on, I had it as a parent. Uh, but I was really impressed not only with the turnout of students, but the different colleges, universities. armed forces, the trade schools, there was really something for everyone, so my hats off to everyone that did that and. Uh, every event that I've gone to, Robert Borley always said there, I see him leaving every school at any given time. I've driven by schools, he's leaving. And he's doing a great job with our communication. He's, it's really great.
Have you noticed the, which I really like, and I gotta get him to some older classes, but um, the recent graduates. I wanted to get him back. I was, I was throwing names at him that I had sent spinning like seventies and eighties.
I did one ask himself, which I thought was really cool, and you mentioned my brother, uh.
I really think that's cool.
Yeah, I love it.
We can let him know I was class of eighty-four, so. You're a baby.
And in spite of that, he did okay.
Still here.
Um. I don't know if now's the time to ask, I have a question, just to. About, somebody had reached out to me about the playground in Savin Rock.
I'm sorry to hear you.
Somebody reached out to me about the playground in Savin Rock, just that I think it's been talked about a couple of years ago.
I know, I I I don't have an update on it.
Okay.
But I know if if you, you may remember that we used to have that like um, spongy surface. We had to take that out because it just got um, too wet and got ripped and we had replaced it with um. Um, a a border and we built it in. um, a, a border, and we filled it in with, and then they have to be a certain kind of, um, wood chip that are sacred kids to play in. That was the last I know about it, but I don't know what has happened since then. We put a, we, we put a lot of money into Savin Rock over the last several years, but I don't know the status of it, it's a, you know, frankly, it's a tough neighborhood and we, there's been some vandalism there. No, 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 but I mean, I should look into it in follow-up. I'll try to, try to see what I can find. And it's perfectly fine to ask that question.
It's just, Ted, Ted was talking about it, it kinda came to, I was like, oh my gosh.
I have to ask the question.
We have to change it around, I would say a couple of years ago now, but, uh, I don't know what we on page is since then.
Some patchwork done on the slides and the swing.
Yeah, no, we did, we did a lot of, and don't forget the baskets, we extended the parking lot, animal fencing there. It looks a lot different than it did several years ago. And I think for that. And we, we've had vandalism there, we've had, we've tried to recreate some programs with some of our teachers out to school and and the police officers become violent, Patrick Petrola was, was in charge of the research office, he had assigned police. Um, you know, again, I don't think it'll be an issue now, but certainly we'll do whatever gets more of that's with.
Right. Right, next, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September second. And hold my Heather, second by Kim, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for D two, twenty-five dash seventy-one through twenty-five dash seventy-three as all inclusive. Motion by Rosa. Heather?
Second, no, it was Rosa.
Motion by Rosa, second by Heather, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion for D three, twenty-five dash seventy-four to twenty-five dash seventy-five as all inclusive. Motion pushed by Bob, second by Rosa, any discussion? That's exactly what I was gonna say, I'm, I'm sure the nurses would be happy, but we're very, that's our nurse, so good job on that. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Under new business, twenty-five dash seventy-six, a formable to relinquish control of property located at two fifty-five Way Road, West Haven, Connecticut, former Anna Lee Ballou Elementary School. I'll entertain a motion which was Rosa.
Second.
Second by Heather, the motion states the Board of Education relinquishes control of the property located at two fifty-five Way Road, West Haven, Connecticut, zero six five one six, Anna Lee Ballou Elementary School, since it is no longer used for educational purposes, and reverted back to control of the city of West Haven. All in favor? All right, sorry, any discussion?
I'll just question you. You know, with this transition, are there any dedication plaques or items that should be reviewed? The building and added to your all we now in city wall? If you're gonna be lost.
You, you know what, um.
Just before we let it go and don't think of one.
No, nobody say that. Chris Evero, myself, and John Torano are supposed to actually walk the building. Um, I'm gonna assume the picture of Animal One, which is there by Mr. Hobbies. Um, we'll stay there, because I know, uh, again, to my knowledge, they're not changing the name of the building or anything, so there are certain things like that that'll say, um, they did a really nice job of cleaning it out, um, getting Christopher pretty closely with, um, not only the city guys, but, uh, our guys, um, did a really nice job. Um, but it's certainly something when we walk the building, we'll take that basis.
Excited to see the veterans leave and have a big community center. It's such a, it's already in a really nice location. From, it's kind of centrally located, so.
It's gonna be my middle school.
Right, we have that dream for like.
That's a long time ago.
Um, yeah, I think, I think it'll be good, I think it'll be good for us and for the city, this will sever those legality ties that maybe put us in a position of responsibility that we're not equipped to be in and ease some of the routine for them to move forward with the plans that they have. Uh, I think it'll be best for all of us to shake hands and heartbreak, so, um, that will.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, because I saw the financial information, just boss savings and that. And, you know, really what the boss says is very clear, we're not using it.
And I just wanna make a point, I mean, we, we work really close to the, with John Torano. Um, and, and Christopher together, we've been, we've given them access, they've started, if we needed it, like, uh, you know, one thing that comes to mind is that we're waiting testing at the end of the year. I have to believe, given plenty of notice to say, well, we need to reserve the gym. Those kinds of things aren't going to be an issue.
I, and I think that's a very good point, but I would think that that's, uh, goes both ways with us and the city as far as each other's face. I know how you feel about school buildings being community buildings, so I'm sure the mayor also uh, feels the same, this is, this is the space for anything, I'm sure that would be possible as well.
Um, just to add, you know, the fact that it is a weird space, our kids benefit. Ultimately, our veterans, our seniors, my mom and possibly I mean, it's the whole, you know. Intergenerational programming that could be, there's. Yeah, I think it's all very exciting.
Good times, good times. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Now, I'll put my glasses back on, I'm a united one. I will entertain a motion to approve the educational specs for the replacement of a roof at Savin Rock Community School. Whereas Savin Rock Community School is indeed a roof replacement, a project, and whereas in anticipation of and subject to the city of West Haven, City Council authorizing the West Haven Board of Education, the V O E, to apply to the State of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services Board and to accept or reject a grant for the project, and whereas in anticipation of and subject to the City Council authorizing at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project, resolve that, subject to the City Council authorizing the V O E to apply to the State of Connecticut Commissioner of Administrative Services Board and to accept or reject a grant for the project, and subject to the City Council authorizing at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project. V O E hereby approves the educational specifications as well as the plans, drawings, and other local work documents for the project submitted to the V O A, V O B on October second twenty twenty-five. Okay, motion by Pat, second by Rosa. Any discussion? I don't know if I have to read the bottom of this.
No, I think that's, that's just where I sign.
Okay, that's what I thought too. All right, um. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Carries. I think the rest of the agenda is informational, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn at six fifty-nine. Thank you, second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?